This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Education Business Meeting for October 30th, 2018. To begin this evening, as we always do at the beginning of our meetings, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public who are here this evening in person and who wish to address the board at any matter or ask a question or make a statement are welcome to do so. You may also, if you wish, can leave a written comment or written question. There is material over by the door and you can leave that for us and we will answer it back to you at a later moment in time. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening that is here in attendance? Okay, seeing that we have known this evening for public participation, may I please have a motion for approval of our agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then a motion please for approval of minutes from our October 9th, 2018 meeting?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Christina and seconded by Karen. Any additions, corrections, deletions?
It's okay.
Anyone have anything for that? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our reports this evening, first up, our financial report section, those, again, at this point, it's a good time to remind folks at home, all of the material this evening for our meeting is under the Board of Education Agenda tab and the October 30th meeting, the amended agenda and all the backing materials are there, and one of those being our Treasury Report and our Executive Summary Report from Luolimo. May we have a motion, please, to accept those reports?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Julene and seconded by Karen. Does anyone have any comment or question on those reports? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up tonight, our Student Representative Report, and we have a substitute tonight. Thank you very much, Lizzie Burke, correct?
Bernal.
Oh, Bernal. I'm sorry. I should have known that. I thought I read the email today and I must have had that wrong earlier, but anyway, Lizzie, welcome. Thank you for substituting and bringing forward the student report this evening.
And thank you for having me.
I should have known that.
It's okay. So, tonight, there is a lot of sectional games going on right now. Boys soccer recently went into overtime, still currently 0-0. It's happening right now in Spencerport. Boys volleyball happened earlier today. It was the semifinals. I'm not quite sure how that won one. It might still be going on as well, but of course, we're all hoping for their success. And later this week, cross-country sectionals are this weekend. And so, over the weekend, so Friday and Saturday, the play Forty Five Seconds from Broadway went on at the high school, and a great job was done by all actors. And of course, in the school community, we are very proud of all their achievements. And everyone in the arts community is looking forward to the start of the Winter Musical Newsies, which is starting in the coming weeks. This Monday, the 29th Climate Club held a rally in support of Juliana versus the United States. They had over 100 people in attendance from all around the Rochester area, and it was very successful for their club. It was one of their first big events that they've ever hosted because they're a newer club, so it was very successful. And the first student senate meeting was today, which was held by Executive Council. It was great to see all of our student body leaders in attendance. Dr. Hall also reported to us on some current student events that are happening. So, coming up is, of course, the start of winter sports, which will be happening starting in November, and the start of the Winter Musical, as I already said. And on December 7th, the Blue Ribbon Celebration Ceremony is currently being planned. It's going to be a great day to honor all of our schools' hard work, and an announcement of special plans that will be happening throughout the year will be made there as well. So we're very much looking forward to that event.
Fantastic. Great. Thanks to Lizzie Bernal. I appreciate the substitution tonight and thank you for coming in. And as you mentioned, I should mention, a lot of sectional activity this week, right through the weekend and into next week, hopefully with some of the, many of the teams in the individual sports. But Dr. Hall and Superintendent Dr. McGowan are both out in Spencerport tonight as we hit the two events, and many Brighton students are out there, and traditionally, those two, along with our athletic director and many of our teachers who act as security guards, do attend those events, and so that's why those two gentlemen are missing our meeting tonight, but we will fill them in later. So, thank you for bringing all that up, and as always, lots going on at Brighton High School. Our Board of Education Standing Committees for Monroe County School Boards Association, and because of our meeting schedule, it seems like, you know, we haven't really reported out on any of these since September 4th. That was the last report-out night, I think, that we had. So, our Labor Relations Committee?
I was there on the 24th. I think we, I don't know who was there, it's a September 19th meeting. I was not.
Yeah, September 19th was the one. I actually was ever part of that. It was about hiring practices to build teaching staffs, yes.
And on the 24th, Linda, I'll get it, I'll get it.
No, no, that must be.
Van Kasky, yeah, was there. She's a labor relations person. She works out of Bosse's too, and of course, she advises many of the districts. Talked about the Janus Law and how it will affect us. She didn't see much of a movement from abandoning the union, not in New York State. I don't know about the rest of the country, but that was her opinion. And there were certain things that were, she brought up. It was quite an interesting event.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I did see the notice, I think, today or yesterday, November 28th, there's a program on Field Trips, correct?
November 28th, Field Trips 101, yeah, serving, staying inside the law when outside of the classroom. So, that'll be interesting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark. We appreciate that. Information Exchange?
Christina, do you want to report? Okay. Okay. Information Exchange met on Wednesday, October 17th, and the topic was school security. We had three separate presentations. One was from, it was from, from Marcus Pizzito and Gary Huffman?
Yeah.
Right? From Campus Construction, and they talked about different ways that schools are hardening their campuses and trying to provide more security. And then, we heard from the Sheriff, Sheriff Baxter, who talked about enhanced security and school security guards, and his perspective on providing security. And then, we also heard from the Head of Security from the Webster School District, and he talked about things that they were doing to address security issues in their district. So it was a very interesting meeting, lots of school, lots of food for thought.
Great. And that one was, that was a large meeting, right, that they moved in the afternoon?
Yeah.
It was at four o'clock in the afternoon, so more folks could be there, and it was really quite.
I also attended that.
We had a big group at that one. And I also did, I know that the November 14th meeting, Douglas Gerhardt is going to be one of the presenters, one of our schools' attorneys on social media.
Yeah. I signed up for that, too. Very interested in that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Julene. I appreciate that. Legislative Committee, Karen?
We met October 3rd, continuing to talk about setting our priorities for the year. And if I have to sum them up, funding, always top of the, top of the list, but also a lot of conversation about local control. So, we were doing a lot of editing to our school safety position paper, and I think that draft will be approved. It was sanitized, to my discontent, in terms of talking about how we don't want to conduct ourselves when it comes to certain elements of school safety, but, you know, boiled down to what everyone could agree on, which was local control. The school districts and communities need to decide for themselves what that looks like. It was an interesting conversation.
It was interesting because the two position papers that have been updated and are now pending Executive Committee next month at School Boards Association. One was on school safety, and the other is on supporting emotional well-being of students. And a year or so ago, those started out as one position paper, and there were a lot of issues, obviously, intertwined there. And they became two separate papers, and a lot of subcommittee work, and the supporting emotional well-being, a little easier lift, there's a lot of good material in that, that moved along. The school safety issue, as we've discussed at this table, as anybody who follows the news locally or globally would fully recognize, that issues around armed security in schools divide districts. I mean, each district is unique and different, and many of you, I know, saw that the Hilton School District decided not to move forward with a recommendation toward a vote on arming what they call youth assistance, similar to SROs. So, this is one of those issues, and so, coming to consensus, position papers are important because they are the stated position of the School Boards Association, so all of us, Monroe County. And so that when we meet with legislators and other folks in the elected realm, staff in Albany, we reach consensus around these points. And so it's important that those papers are around consensus. And there were a couple of items with regard to.
Arming security.
Arming security and studying gun safety and gun laws and things that were quite, and are quite contentious in our society. So, anyway, I do think that at the end of the day, the two papers will be helpful for us moving forward.
Yes.
And the other element of that is individual school districts, certainly we among them, as we have the opportunity to meet individually with our members of the delegations, we can express our own personal and individual opinions as far as what's right and right.
And I think it was a good idea that, that the good work that had been done about research surrounding gun violence, that that's still available to member districts who would like to take it to their individual representatives. That's something that I think that we should definitely do, and I think we'll be preaching to the choir in some ways, but, no, I think the only way to come to consensus on that paper was to talk about local control.
And it was a fascinating conversation amongst the group, so, yeah, thank you, Karen. And we meet then on the 7th of November.
Next week, right?
Yeah, and coming up quickly again. And that will be a convention and election debrief, reminder to everybody.
Oh, is convention this week?
Convention was finished up on Sunday. And Election Day is a week from today, of course, and so when we meet next Wednesday, we'll debrief both of those. And we're also going to be discussing the beginning planning of the December Albany trip, so that is December 10th, for anybody that would like to go on that one-day trip when we go up as School Boards Association. So more to come.
Nobody went to the convention this weekend.
We did not. We did not go this year and send anybody. And next year, it's in Rochester, so we can all go and take advantage of that. You know, we had some conversation, you and I did, Mark. We've traditionally gone, and I had a conflict, I believe you did too, and I think there was some, you know, looking at things that were on the docket this year and some of the other things that we want to do as a board and as a district in terms of professional development, I think deciding to put some resources elsewhere, so I think that'll be fine. Okay. Thanks, everybody, for your attendance at those meetings and for reporting out. We appreciate that. Bosse's report?
Yep. We should mention that most of the board was out there.
We all went.
Yeah, we all were out there. October 10th, wasn't it?
October 17th.
Seventeenth. Oh, my God.
I hope we didn't take that away from anybody's other board member reports, but we all went along with Lou, Debbie, and Kevin, and our Brighton board member, Bosse's board member, Sora Sax, and it was, we spent the morning out there and toured the Bosse's facilities in airport.
Well, Sora reports that the Urban Suburban Program presented at the board meeting two weeks ago or a week and a half ago. Felicia Smith came with a father, a grandmother, and two boys from Western Monique Hoyt. The program has 853 students at 14 districts. We are one of them, including Honeyoy Falls, the newest district. We had 800, the applications were 896 family applicants and accepted 141 new students into the program, so that's interesting. The external audit was held for Bosse's, was very clean and positive. School enrollment is up. Creekside is close to capacity. John Walker, who many of us know, the Communications Director or PR person at Bosse's has retired. I don't know about a replacement.
Their job sharing it with Bosse's 2 right now, so I don't know, is there actually going to replace him at Bosse's 1?
We are sharing, here she does. I'm sorry, I didn't get to that. That's right.
I didn't get the report.
Says we are sharing Heather and Jane with Bosse's 2, and, what is this? And on, oh, on social media, Facebook, Instagram, hashtag #Team1, and bi-weekly e-news. You got me on all of them, because I don't participate in that kind of social media.
We should invite Sora to come and report.
She'd probably do a lot better job than me.
A guest appearance, right?
Yeah.
But just to, just to follow up, we did enjoy that visit. We did, we try to visit every two years, and it actually had been three. So we had a great tour and visit. There's no way to fit it all in, so we may go back. We talked about that to try to hit some of the career areas that we were not able to see. We did see a number of Brighton students in a variety of programs, which is always one of the key elements of visiting out there and meeting a number of the folks who run the various Bosse's programs and seeing, you know, it's difficult, challenging work, and there's so many good people out there working hard at it.
The programs are very impressive.
They really are.
The range of programs and the range of needs of different students that they meet, it really is a very feel-good opportunity, and it's nice to be refreshed every couple of years and see it, and we always see something new, you know, as a kid.
Yep.
Learning a lot and being very grateful that in this community, we have that kind of a powerful resource. We've learned that for one program, some children are coming from as far away as the car such as Buffalo.
Yeah, great island, and someone from the southern tier, and two out of a size one way.
Because they don't have appropriate programs closer for those students, and, you know, can you imagine spending three hours on a car? And this isn't a nice weather, because we, programs are offered there that aren't offered closer to home.
Anywhere in Western New York are the only ones.
So, we have really very special programs there. We get to meet our students that are attending the program.
Yeah, that's always one of the key.
I was really struck, actually. One of the things I was struck by was how our students knew Dr. McGowan personally, and how they each were able to greet each other and have conversations, and I was just really struck by that moment. He knew every single one of our kids who was there.
Yeah. And they, "Hey, Dr. McGowan." Isn't that like a quiet little hi?
No.
Yeah, it's great.
Equally impressed with the staff over there, too. Just some amazing people working with a really wide diversity of students with all sorts of challenges, and they're doing it with energy and enthusiasm and smiles. That staff is really impressive to me.
That's a good point, Larry, because we forget, I mean, there's a large segment of Bosse's that is the career and technical education, but then, you know, there's a huge, the huge mission that they have there of educating students with significant needs in all different types of needs. And, you know, we, we work hard in our district under Carolyn's leadership to make sure that we're serving each and every child in the most appropriate way and the way that they can be, you know, fulfilled and really excel in life. And oftentimes, it's programs internal to our walls, but oftentimes, it's programs offered at Bosse's or another outplacement-type thing, and it is impressive to see the folks out there working with kids in some very challenging circumstances and where they do such a great job. So, we'll have to make sure that, we'll keep that on our docket, and we'll make sure we get out there every two years, and we'll also make sure we emphasize the areas that we might have missed one time or another, so. So that does lead us conveniently into other board member reports, and we haven't done those in quite a while, so I'm not sure what folks would like to highlight, but Julene, you want to start?
Well, unfortunately, the weather didn't accommodate us. Wellness Committee had hoped to have an event at the market on Sunday, but I think we're going to reschedule probably for the spring, where we could highlight some of our wellness programs and our clubs and our groups throughout the district.
Is the market done now for the?
No, I think they go till November 18th.
Middle of November, so, so we wore Sundays, and then they move indoors at Creekside.
Correct. Correct. And there's going to be a donut. I read this in a paper from the last couple of days. A woman who had worked at a restaurant in Geneva is going to be opening a donut business, and her first day at the market is going to be Sunday, the last Sunday that we're open outside, November 18th.
Food trucks and donuts.
All kinds of donuts.
That's what you need, right?
Coffee and donuts. Good way to start a Sunday.
That's not the healthy wellness visit day?
No, that is not the healthy wellness.
Okay.
Moderation is healthy.
Yeah.
A donut to share.
A donut a Sunday is really moderate.
Once a week.
Mark, do you have anything to share?
Well, I did attend the play, the Neil Simon play, which was not a musical but a comedy, and it was, it was well-done. Well-done, again. I participated in my first, after all these years, Curriculum Council meeting, sitting on the Subcommittee with Karen of codifying non-academic skills behaviors. It was a very interesting start. And the Library Media Evaluation Committee, we are going to meet again. So, yeah, and I haven't heard anything about Teacher Center Policy Board. I know we had a meeting canceled, and we'll probably meet again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Karen?
All right, I'll start with Audit Committee. I sat on the Audit Committee with Larry and Mark. We, this is our first meeting since last June, so every meeting we go over our Claims Audit Report just to make sure that our internal systems are functioning when it comes to reimbursement and purchasing. And that process is, over the past two or three years, has really come along, is working very smoothly. So thanks to Chris Ticky, who is our internal claims auditor, for that work. We met with Ray Wager. I have trouble with Ray Wager every time.
You don't have trouble with Ray, just mentioning his name?
No, just his name, though.
Ray's a great guy.
The R and W together. Ray is a great guy. And he manages to make what many would find a very dry topic, very interesting, actually. So he went over our external audit for the, this past school year, and in generally, over the past couple of years that I've seen this, this work come to fruition every year, those also go very smoothly. That's a credit to Lou and to Dahlia and to all the folks in our office. We, our financial picture looks good. Just Ray and his staff certainly look for the places where, where we need to improve, and, and every year, we come out, we come out well. And then we also talked about, and somebody else brought this up, I think it's coming up on Information Exchange, cybersecurity, and working through some, some incident response simulations to think about what that would look like for us, because we know that other school districts are experiencing that, and it will come down the line for us, so.
Great. Thank you. And one, you know, thank you for reporting on Audit Committee, and we do have an agenda item tonight. It's sort of, we had reviewed the corrective action plan, which came from the, the internal financial audit, the independent financial audit, and then our corrective action plan that is posted and that we have, that we reviewed that evening, too, with some very, very minor things, and our folks are on top of it and have corrected or moved toward, down the road toward correction on almost everything, so.
And that information is posted?
It is posted, yes. That's also is part of tonight's list, yes. So, thank you. Larry?
Just on the Facilities Improvement Project, we've embarked on a four- or five-year set of projects, and while all the schools are impacted, the centerpiece of this, obviously, is getting ready for full daycare at Council Rock, fall of '21. Just keep advertising right.
I told people at the library yesterday in the toddler room, that, yes, kindergarten 2021.
Full day kindergarten.
We're going to make t-shirts, kindergarten 2021.
Full day. Big news on that, though, is we did receive SED approval for our designs for Council Rock, and get that work out to bid. Great credit to Lou and all the buildings folks that he works with, and of course, our vendor partners that are working with us on that. But we've got, and I always get accused of being a crate hanger, we have four or five years of a lot of construction work and some mess, and then on the other side, we're going to have these even better schools than they are now, so I caution people, if you've ever done improvements at your home, there's a period of messiness and chaos, and then it's great. So, we're going to enter three or so years in different schools for different projects. Obviously, a chunk of the work being done at, at Council Rock, and Principal Tappan's been involved in that the whole way, so very thankful for that.
He's making faces in the background right now.
He's thinking about the chaos.
He's smiling through gritted teeth.
That's right. It'll be great. Lot of community outreach we're going to do, communications in the neighborhoods, so everyone's always aware of what's going on and how things are happening, so it's fun to actually get going. Obviously, we talked about the track in the past, that's a very visible sign. The work on the high school's been done, so a whole bunch of other projects, but we're moving forward.
Great. Great. And, you know, thank you for bringing that up, and it can't be overemphasized. Many in the community may have heard us over time talking about submitting all of our plans through the State Education Department and how long that takes and the backlog in projects, and then it goes out for third-party review, and so, we have gotten all that review done, and the approval just came through, so we will be in a position to fine-tune the remaining items to be able to go out for bid sometime in the relatively near future as Lou and the rest of the team negotiate those waters. And so right now, that's great news, because that means we can keep to the schedule, at least thus far, that we've sort of maintained all along, so.
Significant, because there's not a great abundance of labor, so the quicker we can get to market, the better chance we have of getting good available labor.
You can make a great bid on our project. Exactly right. So, thank you. Andrea?
The Foreign Language Review Committee met for our first, our first meeting, doing organizational work, deciding what areas we're going to be looking at. I sat on this committee five years ago, we, and I can't believe it's five years already that we're back again. Christine Treasure, Director of Humanities, is facilitating it, and we've got a great group. Almost all of the foreign language teachers are a part of it, it's six through 12, and our next meeting is November 16th.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Christina?
I can elaborate more on the Library Evaluation Committee, the Library and Media Program Evaluation. So our second meeting was at the beginning of October, and it's made up of all the librarians, a Brighton librarian, parents, staff, and board members. And we broke up into five groups: curriculum, instruction, lifelong readers, info literacy, assessment, social responsibility, and environment. And each of the small groups worked on ways that we can collect that data, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and then we'll meet again at the end of November.
Wonderful. Great.
Unfortunately, I was on the road during the meeting.
It's okay. You know, that's why two of you were on the tour.
That's right.
It works out well. I just have a couple quick things. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's just an odd, as we mentioned, the odd meeting schedule has been two months almost since we.
I haven't updated.
It's all right.
Boys soccer just won.
Yay!
Fantastic. So, boys soccer won in overtime, correct? Well, fantastic.
Was it PKs or?
More, more to come. More to come on that. That's sectional, sectional championship. Congratulations to them. Couple quick updates, a couple of items, a dozen or so that I was involved with, but a couple that stand out. One of them, and I, we had a big group there, but on October 18th, we had the Community Leaders' Breakfast, and we had about 70 people. Kim is always tremendous organization, getting that put together, but it was one of our better ones, I thought. It was great attendance by a wide array of leaders throughout the community, and Kevin had a great message that day on where we are as a district and what we're planning to do and what we're active on, and it was just a great event, and to see that, not every district does that, as a matter of fact, not many do that type of a thing, and to bring everybody in and have, share that together and, you know, sort of the bonding before and after when we get a chance to catch up with so many folks, so that was, that was a great event. And then I also did attend, along with Christina and Larry, the Town Safety Meeting on October 16th, and that was an evening meeting that Chief Mark Henderson organized to really review the Brighton Police Department in general, town safety issues, and I would say there was maybe about 40 people at Town Hall that night. I think they hoped for more, but maybe that's a good thing, I suppose. But it was a great discussion, I thought. Chief Henderson did a wonderful job of discussing where we are as a town, the unique aspect of having our own town police department, and what they do, and he talked at length about our relationship, the district and the town, and the police department, and elements moving forward with regard to Brighton police presence in our buildings, and, you know, the thought exchange, review, and where that will lead eventually, which is yet to be determined. But I thought it was, it was a great night and a great meeting, and I, one of the two it was, it was a great night and a great meeting. And I, one of the two things that struck me, and I don't think the town maybe has done enough to communicate, that our Brighton Police Department, 100% of our Brighton patrol, patrolmen and women have had anti-bias and mental health first-aid training. And they also have plans and within their professional development to receive periodic updates to those two aspects of training, which I think is very crucial to all, certainly law enforcement. And, you know, Mark has taken the lead on that as chief. And so I thought that was impressive that evening, the discussion around that, so.
It was well-attended, too.
It was, you know.
And they did talk about pedestrians, safety.
A lot about pedestrian, 12 Corners, right? Pedestrian safety.
Tying back to our information exchange meeting, Christine and I talked about it afterwards, it was so apparent to us how fortunate we are to have our own police department around the corner.
Right.
Whereas most of the districts are dealing with the sheriff's office, and so they don't necessarily see the same officers when, when they're needed, and they don't have the familiarity with the staff, with the buildings, with the students. And our situation is unique compared to many others in this area.
You, you raise a good point. And I'm sure the Monroe County sheriffs do a great job where they, where they patrol.
But it's different relationship building.
The aspect of ours is great. And you know, our, one of the things that we did, we had safety, District Safety Committee met, you know, in the intervening period of time that we're talking about. And, you know, Brighton Fire, Brighton Police are well-represented. Actually, Mark came to that meeting also and did a presentation. So you're right, that unique relationship is really, really important. Our staff and their direct connections with, with law enforcement, to be able to keep kids safe and staff safe and be able to reach out very quickly and get the assistance, whatever assistance they might need. So that's a very, really good point that we don't often think about enough, probably. So, thank you. And thanks, everybody, for reporting on all the things that we do all the time and every, each and every week, so. Our Brighton Teachers Association report.
Hi.
Welcome.
We're back.
We were back. We're back.
I feel like I haven't reported on either since last year.
You haven't either. It's, our, our last reports meeting was the fourth, and we were really just opening it up.
I know. So I, I am excited to report some things. So I wanna personally send along a big thank you because I participated in this as well. But a big thank you to all of our Brighton nurses who scheduled those flu shot clinics in our school over the last few weeks. We really appreciate them keeping us healthy and allowing us to go right to school to get that taken care of so that we can continue to be in the classroom. So that was great. On October 3rd, Mrs. Pettit's 4th grade class from French Road, they were able to meet the Israeli exchange students, and they had an hour of building connections, sharing cultures, and making friendships. They used their technology to play a role as the Israeli students gave a presentation on Israel. And then the students partnered up with their visitors and began to create a PowerPoint together on similarities and differences. They only had an hour, but the memory of this visit, Mrs. Pettit says, will last a lifetime for their students. So that was a great connection. Jessica Padilla wrote, reported out that on Saturday, October 6th, around 20 students took part in Brighton's very first day of dance. Students took hour-long workshops and learned new styles of lyrical hip-hop, musical theater, and tap dancing. Linda Goble, a RIT instructor and dance teacher in the community, taught the tap class. And students really enjoyed this experience and they hope to have more dance opportunities throughout the year. So she was really excited about that. Ellen Harp, our technology teacher at French Road, she presented this past week at Suny Oswego at their technology conference on the use of Arduino, I hope I'm saying that correctly, computers in elementary education in a talk entitled "A Computer in Every Hand." The Arduino computers were purchased with a grant from the Brighton Education Fund, so she was grateful to be able to do that. And then Christine Cole, French Road music teacher, she wants to say, "Did you know that the remake of the song 'Africa' by the band Weezer was started with a tweet from a persistent teenager from Ohio?" Well, the 5th graders in Mrs. Cole's music class do. Mrs. Cole's 5th graders, they've been diving into an ORF arrangement of the song by Toto as they complete their music literacy objectives. The kids are engaged in having a blast learning a song that is currently on the radio, and they were empowered to know that a student like them made it a top 40 hit with a tweet. So there's our social media changing the way things happen. Foreign language interns have arrived, and this is a program where they bring college students from a French-speaking country, Germany and Spanish. And these native speakers work with foreign language students, sharing their cultures and language expertise at TCMS in Brighton High School, and they'll be here till June. And then, "Historical monuments are among other things and an expression of power and indication of who has the power to choose how history is remembered in public places." That quote is from Eric Foner. So during the unit on reconstruction, students in the 8th grade at TCMS have been following the current debate over the use of the Confederate flag and Confederate monuments in public places. To address the singular perspective that many of the Confederate monuments show, students will be working in teams to create a reconstruction memorial that provides more accurate and inclusive history from this particular area. So that's Social Studies Team 8-1. Some 1st grade teachers over at Council Rock, they've been working with their classes on what it means to value one another, our classroom and ourselves. We created, they created a project with their classes and they titled it "What Lifts Us Up." A little bit about that project, this project was inspired from the What Lifts You Campaign, created by artist Kelsey Montag. And in the report, and I'm sure on the website is included this picture, but each student created five feathers using dots, and this tied into their Dot Day celebration that they did at Council Rock in September. And then they combined all those dots to, together to create wings, thus making our What Lifts Us mural. And so the students stand in between the wings and they get their pictures taken. So they're encouraging people to continue to do that. I hope I didn't steal Matt Tappan's part of the report. Okay, so I will stop and...
Show a visual.
Okay, great, awesome. Also at Council Rock, they're preparing for their upcoming Author Illustration Visit. Newbury. And guys, L'Honore Grace Lynn will visit on November 2nd. And all over Council Rock, the excitement in the building is building, and students are preparing to make Ms. Lynn feel welcome. Continuing with things from 6th grade, the English Language Art Students wrote their own short stories, and Danielle Edmonds taught them how to code them. So that was a great connection. And this was an exciting opportunity for all the students. The BTA wants to continue to let everyone know that the Adopt a Highway program is strong, and a few weeks ago, members of the BTA beautified the stretch of Monroe Avenue between Highland and the 590 Expressway. And we did something new this year. Instead of doing it on a Saturday, we scheduled it for a Wednesday in the afternoon so that people could go right from the buildings to clean up Monroe Avenue instead of taking up a Saturday. So that was pretty cool. BTA also wants to thank everyone who participated in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk. It was a huge success. The BTA welcomed all employees in the district to join them in making strides for the cancer walk. It was a very successful event. And the BTA is proud to announce that they raised $4,204 with 38 registered participants, and they had many additional family members walking as well. And the BTA team ranked 14th out of 454 teams. So they thank all of the 90 donors who made that contribution and all the people that were doing that walking. Okay? Next, Family and Consumer Sciences, 8th grade, they're busy in the Home and Career classes. Food labs have begun. I would like to go on over because apparently they're doing an empanada lab. So, you know, who knew? I could go over and have that. So in their labs, they follow systems that emulate a workplace environment, and the students collaborate, communicate, and work under a time constraint, and problem solve as a team. This was really cool. They shared that this year, the students in 8th grade have a real-world opportunity to be recipe testers for the PBS food program, America's Test Kitchen.
How cool.
So the American, I know, really cool. So the American Test Kitchen sends recipes to Ms. Moran's students, and then they make them. They make the given recipe, they critique them in a survey, and then Ms. Moran makes available, makes those available on School ogy, and the information is then sent on to the American Test Kitchen for development or cookbooks for the kids. So that was pretty cool. Katie Lambert, Library Media Specialist, and Justine Park, Special Education Teacher, they presented at the New York State Middle School Association Conference on October 19th. Their presentation, "Collaboration Between the Library and the Classroom: Fostering Academic and Personal Growth Among Hard-to-Read Students," they shared instructional strategies and assessment practices based on their collaborative experiences at TCMS. My last little bit, lots of photos for you to enjoy, but TCMS Library hosted award-winning author Lori Hulse Anderson on October 18th. And Lori refined her presentation for each grade level, met individually with interested students, spoke with some of the teachers, conducted an interview with the newspaper club, and celebrated with her super fans. The PTSA conducted a book sale of a selection of her books. Thanks to the Monroe County Library System for bringing her to Rochester, and the PTSA and administration for helping fund this opportunity. So lots of great things going on.
Yeah, lots of great stuff.
Yeah, and everything will be up on the website as well, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure, thanks.
Next up, our PTSA report. Leslie?
Thank you. I have a lot of info too. It's two months worth.
It is. It's, that's what happens when we do that.
The PTSA's been busy this year selling PTSA district calendars and PTSA spiritwear at building and town events. Calendars are still for sale in this administration building. PTSA had a jam-packed table at home coming this year with residents crowding in for Brightonware. The spiritwear sale just ended, but look for another one later in the year. Our PTSA hospitality chairs in all four buildings collected food donations from parents to welcome back teachers with a spread of treats on their first days of back to school. PTSA hosted its second annual Welcome Back to School Food Truck Rodeo in the back of the BHS parking lot, offering families a chance to connect and experience some community as we head into the new school year. Local band Cadillac Dawn performed, and despite the crushing heat, it was very well-attended. PTSA held its first two central meetings, one morning one and one evening one. We are expanding our evening meeting times to be more accessible to working families who would like to be involved. All dates and times are listed on the first page of the calendar. PTSA celebrated School Board Appreciation Week by providing desserts and cider for the October 9th Board of Ed meeting. Also, a donation in the name of the Board of Ed was made to the Brighton Food Cupboard. The PTSA sent out email inquiries to gauge interest for forming two new committees. We are looking at forming a Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Committee as well as an Apticism Committee. About a dozen parents replied, expressing interest in being part of these new ventures. We will hold an evening listening session to formulate goals and strategies with as many interested parties that can attend in November. Several members of the PTSA attended Brighton Town Board meeting on October 24th for the Board's announcement of prohibiting smoking on all town-owned property and parks. We made a supportive and thankful statement to the Board for their actions. Central PTSA executive board members have contributed over 150 hours of volunteer time thus far. PTSA ran school pictures in all four buildings. Pictures-taking, picture-taking days are now completed with retake days coming up in the next month. School pictures can be ordered until the end of the school year. And at our schools, BHS-PTSA members have contributed 56 hours in volunteer time. They hosted their first two meetings with the principal for school families to connect with BHS Principal Tom Hall. Vaping was a big concern that was discussed, and Tom will bring his talk on that subject to a central PTSA meeting to reach more parents with the important info. Both were well-attended. BHS's, PTSA's main focus has been helping with the planning of the National Blue Ribbon Celebration coming up in December. PTSA building chairs are part of a committee Thomas created along with teachers and students to help plan activities for the big week. PTSA is donating $1,500 to help with the festivities. BHS-PTSA also has six parent volunteers sitting on a BHS Brighton Believes Committee to help plan out this year's Brighton Believes Day on March 6th. TCMS-PTSA members have contributed 85 hours in volunteer time thus far, as well as selling calendars and spiritwear. The TCMS-PTSA had volunteer stationed to give out locker numbers and combinations to students. TCMS-PTSA hosted a meeting with the principal in which Rob Thomas gave a wonderful presentation on the new grading policy and how to survive middle school. Bike and Walk to School Day had 207 students participating. PTSA had volunteers signing students in to be entered into a raffle that occurred during win period. 50 lucky students won popsicles donated by the PTSA. Award-winning author Lori Hulse Anderson, repeating what that said, who wrote classics such as "Speak, Chains" and "Fever 1793" came to visit TCMS, sponsored in part by funding from the PTSA. She did an assembly for each grade, was interviewed by the newspaper, and had a reception with students at the end of the day. PTSA also just finished running its first round of activity nights for the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. The student attendance was very high, especially for the 6th and 7th grades, where they topped over 200 students enjoying each night. Fresz-PTSA members have contributed 75 hours in volunteer time thus far. Fresz-PTSA started out the school year sponsoring a community service school supply backpack drive for students in need. They followed that up with a winter wear drive for the month of October, asking for gently-used items to help those in need stay warm as we move into the cold weather. Items can still be donated up until tomorrow. Fresz-PTSA held their Fresz Family Picnic out on the back lawn. Fresz with Tom Wall's food truck and ice cream. Impact Earth was there to assist in helping everyone learn about sorting their waste. Families were able to mingle and reconnect at the start of the school year. Fresz-PTSA hosted its first meeting with the principal, where Allison Rio discussed the accelerated math and extended studies programs. PTSA also hosted in conjunction with SPED, an informational meeting for parents on what services are available for students who are struggling in school. PTSA also hosted its first round of after-school roller skating events. They enlisted Red Jacket Juice Company to donate juice and apples for the kids to enjoy before beginning to roll around the gym. Council Rock-PTSA members have contributed 84 hours in volunteer time thus far. They also started out the school year sponsoring a school supply and backpack community service drive, and then also followed it up with a winter wear drive. They hosted their Let's Chat meeting with principal, with the principal, where Matt Tappan provided introductory information on what's happening and goals in Council Rock this year. Their next meeting will be in conjunction with SPED-PTSA discussing promoting independence in children. The Council Rock-PTSA also piloted a Child Watch at Curriculum Nights, and it was an enormous success. They provided two adult volunteers each night with three to five helping hands students, high school students, to supervise children so parents could attend Curriculum Night presentations. It was so popular, they had to turn away 29 children because they were at capacity. The most frequent response to the exit survey they conducted indicated that if Child Watch had not been available, parents would not have attended Curriculum Night. Others said that one parent would have stayed home, but this allowed both to attend. A couple of comments parents wrote were, "I think this is a wonderful program. As a single mom, this is a great way to ensure that I can attend school events. And also, this is a fabulous option this year. Please continue to offer. My spouse works evenings and on school nights, sitters aren't usually available." They are planning to offer the program again next year and expand to both cafeterias to accommodate up to 50 children. Parents have also requested that this be offered at Fresz and TCMS for younger siblings. Both requests are being looked at for next year. It could be an opportunity for community service hours that middle and high school students need to complete. The Council Rock-PTSA Library Volunteer Coordinator hosted trainings for parents interested in volunteering in the Council Rock Library. The Council Rock-PTSA Book Fair was held for three school days this year, as well as at Family Night. We have hired a new vendor this year, the book publisher Folette, with the suggestion of some BCSD librarians. The Book Fair was held early this year to get students ready for the author visit. Author Illustrated, Illustrator Grace Lynn will visit on November 2nd, sponsored in part by funding from PTSA. She is the author illustrator of more than 20 books for kids. She believes books erase bias, they make the uncommon everyday and the mundane exotic. A book makes all cultures universal. The BCSD Zero Waste Initiative has expanded to Council Rock this year. The PTSA has discovered that for the young children at Council Rock, parent volunteers are needed to assist Impact Earth representatives in helping children in separating their garbage. Seeing this need, the Council Rock-PTSA has created the Recycling Helpers Committee to coordinate and implement this.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Again, the gap in time, but so much is going on and so many parents helping with all that making it happen. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. We're gonna move now to our principal reports, and we, I guess we'll start off with Rob Thomas and 12 Corners Middle School, since it's loaded up on the screen.
I never get to go first.
Oh, there you go. I'm sorry. Since he never gets to go first, we'll start this evening with Rob Thomas and 12 Corners Middle School. It's only because, you know, Tom's not here.
That's too bad because I have a lot to say about the high school Tom Hall tonight. Too bad he's not here. There you go. A lot has happened since last I reported to the board, and in no particular order. Early in October, however, we had 8th grade team building, which is kind of a booster shot from their outdoor experience. We spent the whole day working together as teams on a number of different activities. And we ended the day with a class picture up behind the building with the high school in the background as our kids are making, starting to think about that transition even early in the school year. A great thing organized by Shelley Camp and all the 8th grade teachers. Lot of great participation. Thanks, you know, the PTSA mentioned a lot of the events. Thanks, Leslie. We had our Bike to School Day, we've had our Activity Nights, and the PTSA is so helpful with all these events, and they really increase participation in everything that we're doing with the kids. And I appreciate it immensely. The author visit was mentioned as well. It's great to have the real McCoy in the building talking to kids. It generates so much excitement for reading. And that's the main reason we're doing it. And Katie Lambert, everybody to help with this is to be thanked. And the way Katie gets the students involved is really remarkable, too. The PTSA meeting with the principal was mentioned. I talked about surviving middle school and that middle school brain and what we can brace ourselves for. The Guskey book that guided our, our grading practice and the policies that we've implemented, along with just the other events going on in the school. I talked, update everybody on what we've been doing, just like we do here today. I talk, update everybody on what we've been doing, just like we do here today at the Board meeting. This has got to be your favorite picture. They mentioned Katie and Justine presenting at the middle school conference. So did I, and Aaron Crusano, along with Victoria Masetti and Cindy Luciano. We had a great showing at the conference, which was held at VVS High School, my wife's alma mater, a week ago, a couple weeks ago. The funny thing about this picture was, I was so proud that so many people attended my session, I took a selfie with the people in the background. Well, the photographer at the event was walking by the classroom, taking a picture of me, taking a selfie at the same time. So, I thought that was kind of funny. I might have been the only one. Red Ribbon Week, we celebrated last week with some great theme days with a message about healthy lifestyles and anti-drugs. Really, a lot of fun, and again, it's a student-driven event that the Student Council organizes under the leadership of Kristen Halligan. Thanks to her and all the kids. Halloween's tomorrow at the middle school. I'll be calling in sick. There's a lot of candy, a lot of running in the hallways, we really need costumes, but the kids have fun, too, and they'll be dressed up just like the teachers, and we'll have a costume contest, and a great time. The costume guidelines I have been sending home in our e-news, please review those. We've reviewed them with the kids, and they're generally very, very good about that. Drop-off and pickup, just a reminder, to really be safe and careful. We haven't tried this arrival method yet with the parachutes. Maybe in the future, but please, drive carefully, listen to the security people in the parking lot, follow their directions. They're really trying to make sure our kids stay safe, and the people that are walking through the lot are safe. Pull forward as far as you can, find parking spots, especially a pickup, because if you're waiting right at the beginning of the lot, it blocks the other cars from coming in to get their kids. Thanks for your help with that. This just in, I'm not sure why the TCMS font is bigger than the other three schools, but it turns out that we won the Compost Cup, and I'm pretty proud of that. We worked hard at the middle school to get this championship, I'd like to thank, no, I won't go on and on. But really, Impact Earth and Sarah Quirk especially, she works in our school and has guided the students, gets them involved, and is so easygoing in a pretty, you know, crazy atmosphere. Three grade-level lunches at the middle school, that's a lot to manage, and she does it calmly and efficiently, and our kids have really bought into the system. So, thanks to Sarah and the Impact Earth people. Upcoming events are here, you've seen them in the Board Report, they are all in the e-news. One special one that I want to make sure everybody remembers is that Essel Thanksgiving Feast is going to be at 4:00 p.m. on November 15th, Thursday. Kristen Halligan and her students in that program invite all students, all families, to this wonderful sharing food a week before our Thanksgiving, and it's gone over really well over the years, and we see so many of you there, too. Please try to make it if you can. And the musical's coming up, too, on Friday and Saturday of the same week. And the kids will be performing at Brighton High School, even though it's a middle school performance, it'll be at the high school at 7:00 on Friday and 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. Is that it?
Thank you very much, Rob. We appreciate that. Next up, we'll hear from French Road, Allison Rio, principal.
Hello.
Hello.
So, much like TCMS, we also had our Red Ribbon Week, and engaged in some of the same activities across the district to keep things hopefully more simple for parents. I know that at home, we were managing three Red Ribbon Weeks, so it was a lot. We did have a great kindness poster, huge poster hanging outside in the main hallway. The theme was kindness for the week. We themed everything we did around helping kids see how kind they are every day at French Road, and this was just a massive list that our counseling team put together of things you could do to be kind, from simple things like saying hello to somebody, or giving a compliment, saying good morning, and kids were supposed to check off the boxes as they went by if they did that, so we had lots of checkmarks there. It's a picture of Mrs. Willis and her 4th grade class, reading the chart and checking out what they could do for the day, but kids were excited to see that. And you'll see lots of post-it notes all over French Road, still there, many of them, and our Be a Good Friend post-it notes, and our kindness chains at FRES. So, throughout the week, our kids in different classrooms, that's just one classroom's kindness chains, chains of all the acts of kindness they did throughout the week. We don't have a grand total yet, but we are hopefully going to have that tomorrow to see how many acts of kindness we did over one week at French Road. So, our lunchroom is up and running with our Tree Hugger volunteers. They've been doing an awesome job. We do not have the Compost Cup right now, so you're welcome for all the 6th graders we send over to you. We're hard at getting that back, but still, really impressive. This is September's report. Our students continue to do an amazing job. Tree Huggers just are really up and running within probably the past week, or maybe week and a half, with the volunteers at every lunch, which is super helpful for our kids to have other people there helping out and reminding, and then, as that chain kind of continues, more kids want to get on board and continue helping to sort waste. Our 3rd graders received their dictionaries from the Brighton Rotary a few weeks ago. Still a very exciting time for the kids. Even though they have lots of ways to access, you know, spelling of words, the dictionary is the best classic. They love having that, taking it into their classroom, taking it home to share with their family, so that was an exciting day for them. And then I wanted to highlight a few things happening around the school, but one pretty awesome event that I got to see in a bunch of 3rd grade classrooms was Mrs. Cole's 3rd graders, who were performing Pete the Cat in music class, and they read this story and learned about how to use all sorts of different instruments to highlight different parts of the book as they were reading. So, they all performed for me, their teachers, anyone else they wanted to invite, and they did a phenomenal job. The kids were so excited, learned a lot about instruments, and incorporated reading, Some pictures from Mrs. Fallon's 4th grade class, they're starting their personal narratives, and they are working on thinking about ideas that they could write about for their stories using Play-Doh to demonstrate the writing process. So, taking one of their small moments off of their heart map, and before they started writing, they designed their small moment with Play-Doh and talked about what the idea looks like to get them thinking a little bit more creatively, and not just using paper and pencil to get their ideas out before they got into their writing of their personal And then students from four of our 5th grade classes, Mrs. Gottfried, Ms. Eda, Mr. Simmons, and Ms. Maz, learned about the Honor Flight. So, these are all four classes together in one room. They had a speaker come in to hear about what the Honor Flight was this fall, and then, last weekend, they went to the airport to welcome the Honor Flight veterans. So, this was an idea that was brought to us by Patty Scarlata, who is a teacher aide who works in those classrooms. She's pretty amazing, and she has lots of great connections to the veterans, so she wanted to bring our kids there, too. So, we look forward to also taking part of this, maybe on a bigger scale in the spring. And we had two PTSA meetings at FRES in October. So, as PTSA mentioned, we had our meeting around accelerated math and ESS, which was helpful to share the new criteria that we use around not just looking at data for accelerated math, but also looking at the behaviors that students exhibit in their learning that would help us see them through a different light, instead of just looking at the numbers. So, we had parents go through some activities where they got to think about the behaviors that the K-12 Math Committee put together, and that was really interesting and fun. And then Christine Treasure, our Assistant Director of Humanities, presented last week around how to help your child if they're struggling, and talked about the RTI process with support from Deanna Spagnuolo as well. And here are upcoming events. Tomorrow is Halloween. As mentioned, we have our Halloween Parade for just 3rd grade at 2:30. If it's not raining, we'll be in the bus loop, and if it is raining, we'll be in the cafeteria. Our Winter Wear Drive is continuing through the month of October. We have lots of bins set up in the main lobby, and they are pretty full. We have our first movie night on November 8th, and we are going to vote on the movie on November 6th, so stay tuned to see what's coming up, but we look forward to having our first movie night for all our kids. We have lots of half-days coming up for conferences, our picture retakes, and we're looking forward to our new family reception, and a PTSA meeting in November with the principal around Impact Earth. Then we'll have Sarah Quirk from Impact Earth there to present with us, too.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. We appreciate it. And this, next up, and finally for this evening, we'll hear from French Road Elementary.
So.
I mean, sorry, Council Rock. I'm just trying to keep it contained. We just heard from French Road.
Well, going last is interesting, because lots of people have presented, so I won't say steal my thunder, but many people have talked about, so I'm going to zoom rather quickly. We also had Red Ribbon Week. One of the highlights for us of Red Ribbon Week was the staff performed a Reader's Theater of a book called Zero by Catherine Otoshi, which is about knowing yourself, and it was great, because the kids were so excited to see their teachers get called up and participate and do silly things in front of them. We also, as part of it, for the month of October, our wellness team organized Socktober. So, we've been collecting socks for local homeless shelters, which is a huge need, and we are at 583 pairs as of last Wednesday, and our final count will come tomorrow at the end of Socktober. So, thanks to everybody who was able to donate. What a great showing that we had. So, this is what Lifts Us Up project that Mrs. Jekyll talked about, but you can actually see the wings. So, the wings sit like that against the wall, and here are some pictures of kids in front of the wings, talking about the things that lift them up. So, my teacher, when I build things, it lifts me up, playing and listening to the violin lifts me up. So, kids have just added to that, and then many other classes have added to just talk about what lifts us up. So, it's a great project started by Mrs. Baker and Mrs. File, so. So, Halloween gym is a tradition, and I think I've reported on it before, but Kristen Cooper does an amazing job, and every year she adds to it. It is probably the most fun week in PE. The kids just love it. And as I was traveling through, we had a special guest. Now, you may look and say, "Oh, is that you, Mr. Tappin?", but let's look a little closer. So, his seat is empty, and I caught him doing lots of things today, so I'm wondering if he's actually just sore. So, I'm not sure, but there's a great picture with his daughter, Emma, on the spider web wall, so he had a great time connecting with the kids and seeing the Halloween gym. Our October Superintendent's Conference Day, we split the day. We spent the morning talking about purposeful play and some really great discussions with our own Council Rock staff, and then did the poverty simulation with the French Road staff over at the high school. Thanks to the high school and their custodial staff for hosting us and really getting everything set up, and thanks to Maria Hewitt for really taking care of all those details. It was a pretty awesome event for our staff, and lots of follow-up that came from it. Grace Lynn is coming. I know that's been mentioned a couple times. We're really excited. It's Friday. Our librarian, Adela Moskovich, has done an amazing job getting things ready. We've got a K-1 assembly and an all-2nd grade assembly, so it can be differentiated. There are 2nd graders who applied and then have been chosen to have lunch with her. She'll be signing books all day, so it's going to be a really exciting event, and thanks to the PTSA for your contribution into that and allowing her to come. Our art teacher, Mrs. Jordan, has done great projects, art projects. So, this is a kite project that connects to one of her books. She has a lantern project that they've done, all connected to Grace Lynn's book, so it's great to see the multimodalities that are getting involved.
We've got some.
Oh, they're right behind you. Yep, they're there. Yeah, they are, and the lanterns, the lanterns are finished, so they didn't make it to here, but they're on display at Council Rock, and they're just beautiful.
But we all burst into big smiles when we walked in here tonight, saw everybody.
So, we did join the Zero Waste Initiative, and although we did not win the Compost Cup, we were very proud of our young people for coming in second. And really, this, you know, I know I've seen, you guys have seen this before when Allison has presented it, but it just was such a great visual for me, looking at it and seeing how much already, and the story that I tell is, I wasn't sure how, I didn't know what the convenience factor was for our custodians, and they work really hard, I didn't know what that did. And I saw John Novelli, kind of the second day of it, and he was carting out, and I said, "How's it going?", and he said, "This is great. We usually take five of these toots out to the garbage, and we only took one out today." So, the people at Impact Earth make it convenient for our staff, make it really easy, make it, they're great working with our kids, and, you know, our little ones are still learning a lot, and they are guiding them and loving them, and the kids are doing a really great job. So, thanks again to Impact Earth for all their work, and clearly, it is working, so. And I, this is like last-minute entry, so I was able to send four of my All-Stars in Habits of Mind, because it wouldn't be a presentation here without me talking about Habits of Mind, to meet a true legend, Bennah Callick. She is one of the authors of Habits of Mind, and they went last Friday, and they got this picture taken with her, and Bennah is really set on figuring out how to make Council Rock a Habits of Mind school, which we looked at several years ago, but it was pretty expensive, and we weren't really ready to make that investment. And she said, "If it's money, we're going to figure it out." She gave them her personal email, she gave them her card and her phone number, and we're going to be in touch, so stay tuned for that, but it was like meeting a rock star, they said, so it was pretty exciting. We do have Halloween happening tomorrow as well, 9:00, it's actually at 9:15, so that is around 9:15 a.m. Halloween Parade in the morning, and a 1:30 if the weather holds out. If not, we won't have those, we'll be kind of parading inside. Friday is Grace Lynn. We have half-days, and I just want to kind of articulate kindergarten dismisses on that first half-day at its regular time, 11 o'clock. Our 1st and 2nd grade will dismiss at 11:30, so it's two different bus runs, so, and I'll be sending out information about how to figure out when your kid will get home, depending on when they normally get home, so. And then, you know, Thanksgiving break, hard to believe we are entering into that season, so, any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Matt, I love that rainbow. I tell you, that is terrific.
It's the pot bowl at the end of the rainbow. That's what we think of as Council Rock.
Thank you very much, and to all of our principals, and Dr. Hall's report is also posted online, so we can look through it there. And one item I want to just make mention of, Julie mentioned the artwork from Council Rock behind us here, but again, to our K-12 art staff, all of our teachers and staff, they do such a great job of making sure this room is full of great art from all of our K-12 students, changed around on a fairly regular basis, and just makes the room come alive whenever we're in here. So, we thank everybody for that, and it's just enjoyable. Well, the only, I guess the only negative is, we faced this way during the holidays, turned around. Anyway, thanks to all of our teachers for that. We have this evening, four different first reads on policies. First up, I would ask you for a motion to approve first read on Policy 6121, a Personnel Policy on Sexual Harassment in the Workplace.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Karen, I think. And this is, by the way, our policy overview template that we've gone to is tremendous tool, so thank you, Kim, because we can very concisely and clearly on a page or two find everything that's right there. So, this is essentially an entirely new policy, lengthy as you might expect by a policy labeled Sexual Harassment in the Workplace. It was required due to New York State law in the 2018-29 budget, there was extensive new law, labor laws, I get it, law, and then, so Jill and our internal folks, using the requirements from the New York State Model Policy and the Bosses Two Model, have all reviewed that, and this is our first read on this lengthy policy. So, that's that. Does anybody have any questions or comments this evening? Did you see anything in there? And again, I remind folks that the policy will remain open, and a future meeting will come for a second read and approval, and at that point, it will become policy and to our system. So, all in favor of the first read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, for first read on Policy 5412, Non-Instructional Business Operations Section, Regarding Procurement Uniform Grant Guidance on Federal Award Grants.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Christina. That, you see, is, again, we don't do a lot of this, but procurement of goods or services using federal grant funds, and this is a new policy based on the Office of Management and Budget in DC, streamlining their guidance on the use of federal awards. So, new policy required. Lou has reviewed. Does anyone have any question or comment on that section? All in favor of first read? Any opposed? Next up, a motion, please, for approval of first read, Policy 5730, again, in the Non-Instruction Business Operations Section, it has to do with transportation of students.
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Andrea and seconded by Karen. You recall that this is the policy change, we discussed it last year, implemented, and so the policies change is amended to reflect the new walking distances from schools, very minor, really, in the grand scheme of things, but they were approved as Proposition Four in the budget vote last May. But they were approved as Proposition Four in the budget vote last May. Any questions?
Nope.
Comments, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, finally, a first read, please, on policy 7131, a motion for, under students, education of students in temporary housing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina. This is, as you've seen, essentially a revamped policy, 7131. It completely replaces current policy in this regard. And it's a completely updated policy with regard to current law and guidelines and a model policy received from our policy update service. Does anybody have any question or comment on that one at this point? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. A motion, please, we mentioned this earlier, we'll talk about it just very briefly, but a motion, please, to approve the corrective action plan to our independent financial audit.
So moved.
Second.
This, again, we, Audit Committee had seen this back at our Audit Committee meeting earlier, and it is our district's response to the independent audit and those areas of risk that have been pointed out. And we reviewed and discussed. Lou and Dahlia, the group does a great job and are on top of these types of things. And I don't have anything further to add. Does anybody have a question or comment? All in favor, then?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, we have one bid this evening, a motion, please, to approve the bid. It's a cooperative bid through the B O C system for standard copy paper.
Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Andrea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then, lengthy consent agenda, a motion, please, to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. The consent agenda this evening does include a lengthy list from the Brighton Education Fund on gifts that they have awarded based on their meeting earlier in October. And as we always do traditionally, we acknowledge gifts outside of the consent agenda itself. But first of all, a gift in the amount of $2,015 from the B E F and the Brighton P T S A toward the cost of the two author visits that have been described this evening. A gift in the amount of $237 from the Brighton Education Fund's David D. Haven Memorial Fellowship to cover the additional expense for a Brighton High School science teacher to attend the Stanies Conference. A gift in the amount of, okay, this is, let me finish the Brighton Education Fund, and I'll come back to that. A gift in the amount of $250 from the Brighton Education Fund for Council Rock Primary School, two classrooms listed there to purchase green screen and stand and two microphones, along with other additional equipment. A gift in the amount of $1,799 to French Road Elementary School for materials to enable the establishment of an after-school coding club for grades three through five, and also for use in classroom programs. A gift in the amount of $2,500 from the Brighton Education Fund for Brighton High School for an interdisciplinary program involving the D H S Mixed Choir and Orchestras and A P English classes, which we'd like to hear more about in the future, because that sounds fascinating.
I can tell you more about that one, but I'll save it for another day.
A gift in the amount of $280 from the Brighton Education Fund to the Brighton High School as part of a targeted grant to support the Science Olympiad registrations for an upcoming competition. And then, the one item I skipped, private gift in the amount of $100 from Mrs. Mary Lou Burnside to the Visual and Performing Arts Department, to the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund in honor of the late Arthur L. Miller. So, those are our gifts for the month. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Want to talk about that now or in the future?
No.
Okay, future. That does sound fascinating. I read through it earlier.
There's a snippet in Jody's letter. We can see where the gift's at.
Okay, I'll take a look through that in more detail then. Any further items of business, any board members this evening? Tim, we've covered everything this evening.
Oh, I did have one thing.
Yes.
I forgot that the Ren, because Tom didn't get to give his.
Correct.
His thing, that we have students here from Ren, France. They're all on a bus coming back from the soccer game right now.
That's fantastic. Maybe they were like a good luck charm. And you are one of the host families.
I am one of the host families, and they, we had like a board administrative welcome for them, and they sent the international liaison to the Sister Cities from the mayor's office to welcome them. So, that was very nice.
Because it also is the anniversary.
It's like the 60th anniversary of the Rochester.
Significant anniversary of the Sister Cities Program with Rochester. So, thank you very much, Christine. A good catch. You're right. They arrived late last week.[1713.88]